We'll start tonight. No problem. Pledge our lead to prayers, mark that with the prayer. Those who like to participate, please do so. Can we bow our heads? Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight as in just to guide us. Help us make the right decision for those things that are important. And Lord, we ask that you cover all of our staff, our workers from the front door to the back door. Give them strength and give them courage. These things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Walz.
Present.
Mayor Protam Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland is absent, and Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have seven members present and two absent.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody again for coming out and seeing what we do, what we are doing, and how we're trying to help the city. When you're called to the podium, I need everybody to be respectful, courteous, no booing, no clapping, no obnoxious behavior. I really would like for all of my council persons, my fellow councils, to put your phones on vibrate or shut them off, as well as your computers. Audience, I ask the same thing, so that we don't interrupt someone when they're speaking. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have one announcement. It's that city offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, for the Independence Day holiday. And that takes us to public input.
Okay. We have a number of people who want to speak tonight. And the public input, you will be called to the podium by a clerk. You will be timed to three minutes. Please make sure that you get what you need to talk about within those three minutes. As you're called up again, please state your name. Please no obnoxious behavior, booing, or clapping. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Shatoris Jackson.
Hi, White. Yes. What I've come to here to talk about, as prior, is the roof repair. I'm still waiting on the roof repair. They tell me they're waiting on, I guess, a lower bid for the roof. Not that you're out of funds, but they want to pay less to fix the roof. While in the meantime, me and my children are sitting in a house that roof may and may not hold out, I would like someone to look into that. Like I said, especially with the rain. The rain has been very heavy this season. And being that, I think they say the city manager closed it up last October, November, for doing the roofs, because they thought the weather would be bad. But we kind of had good weather till December. And we could have probably got a lot of, whoa, they probably could have got a lot of houses done in the meantime, and I wouldn't be up here now. And also, I love that we had the hockey event. I'm a big fan of hockey, pay hockey in elementary. But the one thing that I wanted to say was, I heard everyone say, get our home ready for visitors. But we have to get our home ready for people that lives in our home. And that's what brought me up here again, was about the children not having a place to play. We don't have parks, no parks for the children. We shouldn't have to go 20 minutes out, 10 minutes, 15, when we have good soil that the children should be able to play on. So hopefully, you can use some of that grant money to give us a park, and then open up the park for us to be at. I used to enjoy walking around that park. I used to love going parking there, sitting there, reading my book, looking at the water. I should not have to say, ooh, ain't no spaces today, or, ooh, do I feel like walking all the way over there without my car and just sitting on there with the bugs on me and everything. It's a park for us. The city needs a park for their people to be at. And we should not be penalized because, ooh, some people don't know how to act. That's in every culture, that's in every city, in every county. They don't close up parks. They don't take their people and say, hey, you go way over there. Or if you can't afford it, you just sit in your house and look. That's not right. And you're our village. We elected you to be the village currently. And we should see some changes. We should see something good coming from all of that money that was given from the government. Our city still looks the same. It's a little bit, but not millions worth, nowhere near. And that's what I would like to say. But I would like somebody also to look into the roof and program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You get an answer, Ms. Jackson, because we'll be waiting to see what the answers are.
Our next speaker is Evelyn McGovern.
Good evening.
City Manager, Mayor. I just want to thank the Council for the opportunity to purchase the property at 3057 We will be moving by the end of this month. And I want to invite Council, if you haven't been there already, to come and see the building. It's a beautiful building. All the funds that we were allotted, the total of $275,000, has been spent. Last month, we received a Good Report card from Guide House. And we had an inspection of the property. And with that inspection, you know, when you buy property and it's used, most times it needs some repairs. And so we need numerous repairs. And I want to say that we really are here too, also, to ask for some additional funds in the amount of $150,000 in capital funds. We need these funds because we have a huge basement that needs a lot of work. We need flooring. We need to waterproof the walls. We also have a roof that needs dire repair. It has leaks in it. And we can't start our STEMS program in the basement until we get this work done. The roof is causing a lot of problems. It's also draining into another area in the basement as well. We also have some numerous other repairs that I just want to mention. We need to replace the hot water heater. We need two repairs, the cement wall on the sidewalk, I mean, cement sidewalk. We need to do interior painting in the basement. Repair the front door wooden panel in the entryway. The men's bathroom is not functioning, and water supply is turned off. We need to clean the carpet and replace carpet in the lower level. And basically, I mean, it's numerous other repairs, but the building is really, it's moving and ready, but we have to get our roof replaced. And basically, it's almost half the cost to repair the roof than is what we're asking. So we hope that you consider this. If there's any additional funds, ARPA funds remaining, that you consider women and colors for these repairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Tracy Weber.
As board, a board member for 18 years and former board chair, I can tell you that PSN has successfully reinvented itself many times due to the incredible people involved. Most recently, in 2020, PSN assisted 464 participants with a total of 1,870 services. Fast forward to 2023, PSN assisted 2,374 participants. That's a 412% increase for a total of 7,589 services. The majority of these participants came from the city of Saginaw, with the most prevalent demographics being single black mothers from the zip code 48601. PSN is quickly becoming the go-to resource for those facing hardship due to our holistic, comprehensive wraparound services. This organization must secure additional funding to continue offering the workforce-stabilizing programs that prevent so many families from losing their source of income due to something as simple as a broken-down vehicle or past due rent payment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kaitlyn Day.
Hi, everyone. Kaitlyn Day, I've been with Partnership Network for two and a half years now, and I wanted to tonight share the story of one of nearly 900 city of Saginaw residents that received assistance from our organization last year. At a time of financial hardship, one dedicated employee of Stars found solace and support through the utilization of success coaching. Struggling to make ends meet and facing personal challenges that required time off, she approached PSN seeking assistance. Her situation was dire, with a shut-off notice from consumers and limited access to food, often prioritizing her children's needs over her own. Recognizing the urgency of the situation, our success coach Dana swiftly intervened to address the immediate crisis. By leveraging our partnership with DHHS, we were able to combine funds and cover the outstanding utility bill. This crucial intervention ensured that the employee's family could continue to have access to electricity, alleviating a significant burden from their lives. Moreover, we extended support by providing essential food assistance to the employee, which brought her immense relief knowing that her children would have food to get by. Beyond the tangible impact of the services provided, our involvement had a profound effect on her emotional well-being. And this employee, who had always been one to lend a helping hand to others, finally felt secure in her position. Through the success coaching and empowerment support provided by our organization, this employee was able to overcome a challenging period in her life. The success story of this employee not only highlights the essential role that our organization plays, but also serves as an inspiration to others, demonstrating that seeking help is not a sign of weakness, but an act of courage and self-care. So this is just one of our stories here. And in your handout, you received a quick snapshot of what we've done just this far this year. We are set to go over those numbers. The majority of our participants do come here from the Saginaw, city of Saginaw. So we appreciate your diligence in looking through our ARPA application, and we look forward to talking about it more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samantha Jones.
All right, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today and for taking the time to listen to us about our programs. Partnership Network is an organization that has been around for over 30 years, serving the city of Saginaw, connecting employers, employees, education, and community infrastructure to help lift up our workforce and drive community economic vitality. Partnership Network's goal is to improve the financial stability of residents in our area. To accomplish this, we must change the way we work by collaborating in new ways, integrating services, funding and financing the work differently, and most importantly, relentlessly focusing on the significant disparities that leave so many in our city behind. We originally submitted an ARPA proposal when requested in 2021. I've come before council before, and I have inquired with other city council people about how we can use some of these workforce development dollars that are needed to be allocated to help people that need it now with a proven shovel-ready program that is not only out of pilot, but in regular programming now. We came to you asking for funds for Community Workforce Success Initiative in 2021, and we were able to make it happen, and we want to make it grow. I was asked by a participant from 2021 to read this letter of recommendation to you today. Her name is Terrasina Jackson. She now works for Holy Cross Services. This is from Terrasina. "I am writing to express my strongest recommendation for Partnership Network and its programs. As a resident of Saginaw County, I can personally vouch for the lasting impact their services have had on my life. Several years ago, I aspired to transition from being an entrepreneur to a substitute teacher role. However, affording car insurance to fulfill the travel requirements posed a significant obstacle. This seemingly small hurdle threatened to delay my career advancement. Fortunately, PSN stepped in at a critical moment, recognizing the importance of transportation and securing employment. Their team provided me with an invaluable assistance in helping pay for car insurance. This support proved to be my turning point in my career journey. PSN impacts extends beyond one single instance. Their comprehensive approach, as outlined in their motto, 'Shift Happens,' addresses a wide range of needs the Alice population faces. Their programs encompassing budget development, career exploration, and more empower individuals like myself to navigate challenges and achieve their goals. Thanks to PSN's support, I was able to overcome this hurdle and secure this teaching position. This role has not only allowed me to make a positive impact within my own community, but also has opened doors for further professional growth. My life has progressed significantly, and I credit PSN for setting me on this path. Their dedication to supporting individuals and families in Saginaw allows residents to overcome challenges." Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Forbes.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Manager Moore-Allis, Mayor Protam Bench, council members and staff. My name is Jamie Forbes. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about Partnership Network tonight. I bring greetings from Stars Director Glenn Stephens and our staff of over 130 drivers, dispatchers, janitors, mechanics, and administrators. We have been a part of the Business Resource Network for six years and have found that the resources that Partnership Network brings to our staff has allowed us to maintain the staff numbers we need to continue providing transportation to Saginaw. Everything from childcare, housing, transportation, mental and physical health care challenges, financial literacy, legal assistance, all of these things are challenges that we have, that have been faced by our staff. Partnership has been available onsite, as well as virtually, to help solve problems and increase the quality of life of my colleagues and I. In 2023, Partnership coaches interacted with staffers 402 times, assisting them for over 515 hours. They've helped us decrease turnover, increase attendance, and boost productivity. As an outsider organization, we find that staff are much more likely to come to Partnership coaches than they would to bring their own life challenges directly to their supervisors. That layer of separation helps them feel safer and more comfortable. This program is a win for employers and a win for employees, allowing them to escape the cycle of poverty. We could not be more supportive of possible expansion into the city of Saginaw. Now, I'm going to take my Stars hat off for a second and let you know that as part of Great Mirror Project, we are trying desperately to be able to make our projects happen this year. As you can imagine, there is a lot of awesome stuff going on in Saginaw this year, and fundraising has been really tough. Some friends of ours have graciously offered to host a music fundraiser for us. So we will have Great Mirror Project's Sunday Fund Date Fresco Fest benefit. It'll be July 21st from 3 to 9 at Morley Plaza. Pride has graciously offered to let us use their setup. We will have live music all day. In addition to art vendors, 50/50 trivia, karaoke, food trucks, beer tasting, tons of kids' activities, and live painting. Suggested donation is $5, but all are invited, just to come and have some fellowship together. If anyone is interested in being a vendor, or donating, or all that, all that business, it's all on our Facebook and our website. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Molesky.
Hello, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Julie Molesky. I work at Next Year Automotive, and I am also a board member with Partnership Network. I thought I would talk to you a little bit about this from the employer perspective and how we became involved with Partnership. We have been doing success coaching with our employees for eight to 10 years. It's something that started under a grant program for us, and we found that it was so incredibly valuable that we figured out how to continue to fund it by ourselves. We definitely struggle, because there are people that just have a hard time because of different things going on in their life. The success coaches are who they can talk to about that. It's really essentially having someone in your corner that you can talk about. I have a transportation need. I don't know how to handle this situation. What can I do? So that gives you some ideas of some of the things that success coaches can help with. At Next Year specifically, in 2023, we had 420 Next Year employees received employment stabilization assistance. And of those 420 employees, they actually received more than 1,000 assistance, 1,000 services. Generally, it's about two to three apiece, because once you start talking and build a relationship of trust, you start to attack other issues that might cause problems. These things include things like transportation issues, housing, helping cover consumers' bill, helping local childcare. I want my employees to be able to concentrate on their job. They're making the steering systems in your cars. So I want them to be able to focus when they come in. And so if they're worried about their kids, if they're worried about their power, it doesn't work. And so this really removes a barrier of being worried about talking to someone in HR or something like that, and it allows them to have an advocate in their corner to help them resolve issues and to help them do some simple things that are very complicated and very intimidating to some folks. These services are critically important to help our workforce that fall into the Alice population, asset limited, income constrained but employed. And they just need help making ends meet and figuring out how to juggle it. It can be things like suddenly they're changed to a different shift, or their car has trouble, things like that that can cause great upheaval, and it keeps them employed. Again, they offer holistic, comprehensive wraparound services. Return on investment on this project, I would tell you, is essentially guaranteed, because it will keep people employed, it will help them to find jobs, it will help them to become more stable, to be able to find employment. It's essentially having someone in your corner. And so that's the most important part about it, someone for them to talk to, and it's someone to help connect the dots, but in a holistic way, not having to go from agency to agency, or not knowing who to talk to about something. As an example, oftentimes, we find that our employees' credit scores are increased. It helps them to create some saving funds. It helps them to become more positive. So overall, at Next Year, it's been a great experience, and I would highly suggest and ask you to take every consideration of their proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Riley Watson.
Good evening. I am honored to be here before council this evening, and I want to applaud everyone that has come to the podium with all of your help for community. It is needed. It is necessary. Kudos to you. The program that I am seeking ARPA funding for on this evening is called Yes. You have a handout before you, so I won't go through the details of what's in the handout. But this program is something that I did in Lansing School District eight years ago, and it proved most beneficial during COVID, when school was shut down, because we had opportunities to be more intense online with the students in creating business plans for them. My church, this year, our goal is to be more effective and more intentional with young people, not just the young people in our church, but the young people in our community. So based on what Jesus said, "Train up a child in the way they should go, and when they're old, they won't depart," we believe that it is important to teach children how to be business-minded as children. If they grow up understanding finance and business, we don't have to deal with a society of adults who don't have anything, because they already have the idea of, I can make money with the gifts and talents that I possess. One of my favorite parables in the Bible is the parable of the master and his servants, when he handed to each of his servants a particular amount of talents. When he gave them these talents, he had an expectation, and the expectation was they do what he did with what he had. He was a profitable man. He was a businessman, and he was well-known for what he did with his money. We want to teach children in Saginaw that you can make money now. They are spending a lot of time on social media. They're spending a lot of time doing this. But doing this makes money if they're taught how to do it. We see a lot of children stealing. I work at Arthur Eddy, so I also work in the school district, so I deal with kids on a daily basis. Theft is big in schools, and it's big in our retail markets. And I talk with people in retail spaces, even at pop-up shops, they're dealing with theft. So that's something that we need to curb, and you curb that by putting money in people's pockets. If I have my own money, I don't have to take anything from you. And we're asking that ARPA funds be distributed to us so that we can distribute them back into the community to help our young people. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Pam Clark.
I'm Pam Clark, and I work at Delta College, but I am also a board member on the Public Libraries of Saginaw Board. So I thank you for your time and appreciate that you will give us a hearing on what the library has to offer. I am advocating on behalf of a millage renewal. It is just a renewal, and you each have a flyer about some of the services the library offers. It is on the August ballot. The millage pays for two-thirds of all of the operating costs of the library, and we have four branches that we operate. It is a service widely used from youth all the way to older people. So on their behalf, I certainly would like to see the service renewed. And we have many services that you probably don't know about. We have a lot of digital resources, digital checkout of books. We had 157,000 people just utilizing our programs over the last few years, 4.9 million items checked out over the last decade or so. But a lot of that is also digital. And so a lot of the things that we have, access to a half a million digital books and magazines, and those are very, very popular, all paid for out of the millage dollars. So as we renew that millage, all of those services are free to all of the public, so they do not have to pay any services, or pay for any of those services when they come in. Right now, we're in the middle of our summer reading program, which has been in operation for a century. We have been doing a summer reading program for 100 years at the library. And the library itself has been around for 134 years. So we are a longstanding service to this community. It is the city of Saginaw, Kochville, and Zilwaki that pay for those taxes. It replicates the Saginaw Public School District. I am appointed by the school board. I do have fellow members who are appointed by the city council, and I'd like to advocate on behalf of one of those members that you'll be renewing tonight, Diane Clock. And she will be going for another four-year term. She's a wonderful member. And we all believe very strongly in education for youth, education for K-12, and through to college. So we all see the value of that, and we hope all of the members of the voting public do as well, in addition to city council and all of the city employees. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here that takes us to remarks of council.
Council members, you have three minutes as well. The buzzer will go off on you too. We'll start tonight with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thank you for attending this evening here with us. I know it's hot outside. You could be anywhere else, but you chose to be here with us. We appreciate it. All the speakers that came out, it sounds like everybody has a desire, just like us, to help our community and make it a better place for our younger youth growing up. That's always awesome to hear the support, you know, the positive. And of course, you're going to have cons, just like anything else and anywhere, you know? So we do like to hear that, because that gives us feedback, our eyes and ears out in the field when we're not able to be there. And like I said, we always have a lot of events, and people are like, there's nothing to do in Saginaw. Well, just come with me, and you'll stay busy, believe me. I was out today in the heat volunteering for the Eastside Soup Kitchen. I'm the executive board, and it was hot out there. But I have a passion, and I love what I do, so I'm out there helping my people. And it was a sold-out event. It was great. And yeah, it was a little bit hot, and I did have a coat on, because I'm always cold, but it was okay. I survived. I'm here to tell the tale. So just some few things coming up. I know right now, people are always in need of food, especially with kids being at home. So tomorrow, Victoria's Believers, starting at 10:00, have their food giveaway, and that's at 624 South Outer Drive, Saginaw, Michigan. And then the Eastside Soup Kitchen as well, Friday, starting 9:00 a.m., and that's usually a drive-through service. Those that are eating and dining in, which is nice, they prepare them a bag, so that way they can carry instead of a box. And that's going to be this Friday as well. And then Saturday, Old Town Christian Outreach, they always have a nice food giveaway every Saturday at 10:00, whether rain, shine, snow, sleet. They're dedicated, and they've been doing it for a long time. Also, tomorrow, I will be tending the Community Resource Fair at Bliss Park from 12 Also, tomorrow, I will be attending the Community Resource Fair at Bliss Park from 12:00 to 2:00. They have a lot of great resources, if you get a chance, stop on out there. I know last year, I got a good mail from TNT, so they have a lot of stuff out there for the kids as well. So if you have time, I know it's going to be hot, but even if you just stop by just to see what's going on, it is definitely worth it. Tomorrow, I'm also on the Bayside Clubhouse Open House Advisory, and they're having it from 3:00 to 7:00, and they will have light refreshments, and then just open house to see what they do and give back to the community. I just always thought you had to belong to the clubhouse, but it's not. And then last but not least, I'm going to get it in. Deer at the Zoo this Wednesday by the Reed Association of Saginaw County, the first 200 kids, get in free and then after its regular admission. And they have a lot of fun things going on for kids, because I know a lot of kids are at home, don't know what to do with them, and it's free up to the first 200 kids. If you get a chance of going on out and check all these fun things that are going out in our great community. Thank you, guys. Good night, and have a good one.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Saginaw. It's great to see everybody, especially Representative O'Neill, former Mayor Clock, and former Councilmember Forbes. Thank you all so much for coming. It's always good to see people that were up here, here. It's always probably a different lens. So yeah, everyone, please stay cool. It's going to be a record-breaking week. Happy Father's Day to everybody. Yesterday, we're missing two of the greatest fathers in Saginaw here, Councilmen Copeland and Williams, but Councilman Balls. Happy Father's Day. I had the chance to go to the new building that Women of Color, Colors has bought, and it's an amazing building. I think Evelyn can kind of speak to my excitement when I was there. It has an amazing amount of potential. The previous owner had left all the desks and furniture and office materials there, so it's almost like kind of turnkey-ready, minus the roof. So thank you for coming and talking about the need for that in order to get started. But I really envision that as a place where a lot of Saginaw's youth, women and fathers are able to go and really contribute to their community. So very excited about that. Anybody that has not been there, please go, it's right off of Davenport. Just want to speak really quick about the violence that has continued to happen in the last week and a half, two weeks since we had the chief come up and speak about crime in general. This is just the time when this is happening in our city. Since my time here on council, it's been like clockwork, starting in May. It just devolves our city into a lot of funerals, a lot of shootings, a lot of violence. So please, if you know anything, call Crime Stoppers, call the police, do what you can to do your part. We'll look at what we receive from the chief on our end to see how we can help, but it's just a very sad thing to see. I actually, and if there is a shooting and you're there, and you take, please don't take a video, and please don't post it to Facebook. Just want to put that out there. If anybody has any information on Keyshawn Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Woodson III, Cortez Hampton, Massey Rudinson, Johnson Lorvan, Ronald Pacico, Delance Stephens, Tzey Thomas, Tyrone Kennedy, and Daquan Mims, please call Crime Stoppers at 1-800-422-5245. Again, 1-800-422-5245, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'd like to say good evening, and thank you, citizens of Saginaw and others that came to look at your council at work and to share with city council. I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers. To women of colors, I came by, stuck my car in the door. I was peeking through, went around, beautiful edifice, and through what I could see through the windows, very nice. I looked to come back again and do my tour. Also, the partnership, definitely had already been looking over your information. I definitely know your work for the last several years, so definitely had my vote already. So I don't have a lot to say today, but I'd like to send my condolences, not only to the families that experienced death in the last, violent deaths, murders in the last few days, send my condolences not only to the family, but to the citizens of Saginaw, because as you know, that's all our families. So with that being said, have a beautiful rest of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming out to express your views and helping out the city. And I noticed out of the nine people that's speaking today, we got four people from out of town, Millland Bay City, and Frankenmo, who come from their hometowns and come to the city of Saginaw to help out. We appreciate what you're doing in the city of Saginaw. You know, it's amazing how people want to help people and other people who don't know the help is available, you know? We had to get the word out to let people know that there is help, and there is hope for everybody here in the city of Saginaw. Unfortunately, a lot of people have experienced a lot of negative and trauma, and they don't think there's no hope in the city of Saginaw. So it's a lot easier to medicate no hope with dope, and we know that we have a dope problem here in the city of Saginaw. In some kind of way, we got to keep connecting these people and giving them some hope, so they quit using dope. I mean, it's terrible here in the city of Saginaw. You know, we got some people that have, do crime because of drugs, trying to get drugs, and other ones doing crime because they're trying to keep their drug trade up, and the market is shrinking, and the jobs are shrinking. So we got an issue with that, so we got some kind of way to figure out how we can help these people. Quit thinking that dope is the answer. And it all lies with people coming from all over the community to help us out, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the representative for the things he do in our community to try to help people get off of drugs and alcohol. We appreciate Pastor Holden for the magnificent program he have with Come Out, Stay Out. I mean, what better way can we help the citizens by giving them some hope, by letting them know that once they come out, they need to stay out, and there's other resources to help them stay out of jail? And you know, when we do that, we give our children hope in the same vein, when they see that their parents are doing something positive. So I'd like to thank everybody, the ladies in the partnership network, thank you, the women of color, we thank you. We think everybody is trying to do their best to save the city of Saginaw. You know, when we save the city of Saginaw, our house values have a tendency to go up, you know? So there's a lot of things we can do, and we, and everybody here sitting at this seat know they want their values to go up, because when their values go up, that means we get more tax dollars. We get more tax dollars, that means we can open up more parks. I mean, so it's a circle joke, circle jerk, when it comes to one person doing good, and then another person can do good, and then all of a sudden, you start getting more tax money, and then we can start taking care of our parks and hiring more policemen and firefighters and things of that nature. I just want to say, I had the opportunity to go to Fisher, Indiana. My grandson graduated from his second fire department, and it's a beautiful city, they got a good tax base, the minimum income is $127,000. Boy, would we like to have something like that here in the city of Saginaw. So I'm going to keep, try my best to keep hope alive here in the city of Saginaw, hopefully we can do something to help out our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oste.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to the chamber tonight, and thanks for coming out on this warm evening. Just a few things here. Evelyn, thanks for coming out, and I also want to thank Vicki Hill, because she did give me a tour of the facility. It is a fantastic facility, it's huge. My comment at one time to Vicki was, "Oh, my God, it keeps going." So you got a great, a great building there and a lot of space. Jamie, thanks for coming out and sharing some things, too, with Stars, or the Great Mural Project at the end. I am going to be out of town, however, but great, good luck with your event. Saginaw's really turned into a mural city, and I'm really enjoying it. And Pam, thanks for coming out and sharing some things, too, with the library system. And I really like the fact that you broke it down by $5.41 a month for a $100,000 home. I did the same thing with the tax cap. I put together a spreadsheet for every $1,000, so they can see exactly how you're impacted if that group is successful and provided that with them. Few other things, too, because we're talking about the heat tonight. Make sure you're checking on your neighbors, especially your seniors, if they live alone. I do have a gentleman across the street that I do check on, so, because they can suffer from heat exhaustion or heat stroke, and the heat stroke is confusion, dizziness, and becomes unconscious, as opposed to heat exhaustion, which I've got before because I forgot to drink water, dizziness, thirst, heavy sweating, nausea, and weakness. So please make sure your neighbors are good and taken care of. Silos and murals, we keep talking about them, but I've been watching lately the boats that are coming up the river to see the silos. I've been down there again, too. People are just coming to see them, and I just keep saying, "Hey, we have some great eateries and restaurants here in town, both on the east and west side, so please check us out." But also, there was an article in the Michigan Banner that I provided some information to them as well, if you get a chance to read it. But there's, it was good news, they're going to be doing a lot of art theater concerts down there. There's actually a concert coming up on June 22nd, it's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00. And there's going to be, Major Course for Minors is going to be playing, I heard. So yeah, so check out the murals, just check out for events coming down. I'm excited to see, they're talking about benches and everything down there, too, so it's a great space. It's creating a lot of buzz in the city again, and continues. Also, I just want to mention that over the past two weeks, I had the opportunity to attend three events. I swear to God, I live at the Horizon Center, but Heart of the City, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Zeta Gamma Sigma Chapter, first-ever Culture for Service Award, and congratulations to John Poo, who received it. Also, we had the Juneteenth Celebration, they had their Excellence in Education Ball, where we celebrated educators and people who have pioneered education, especially in the Black community. So that was just a really great event. So hats off to all these things. But what I realized was, I like the fact that we take the time to recognize people when they're doing good deeds, and we celebrate it as a city. And I think that's really important, and that's something really special about Saginaw. So I really noticed that over the last two weeks. Also, I'm doing a front porch roll call at my house, 1,000 Hoyt, June 24, 6:00 p.m., with the police department. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Bench.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everybody. Special greetings to my three former colleagues who are here tonight, and I would just co-sign what Ms. Clark said about Diane Clock, that any group that has the pleasure of working with her knows what a fortunate group they have become. And to all of our other public speakers, thank you for being here, thank you for all the work that you are doing with your individual organizations, and thank you for your continued advocacy for the work that you're doing. I'm hoping that staff could look at Ms. Riley Watson's proposal. I had a chance to look at it, because I met her over the weekend, but it's a reasonable request, and it's all capital, and I know that my favorite thing right now is capital spending, so that would be something I'd be interested in learning more about through Guide House and staff. But I just want to thank Osby and everybody who put on the Juneteenth program, the festival, the parade, all of the wonderful events this weekend. It was really exciting to see how many people came out for the parade, how many people participated in the parade, but also, while we're lining up, Hoyt Park is just bustling with their activities, and the zoo is bustling with their activities, and you can just kind of see between the murals and all of the different things that we have going on in Saginaw that really good things are happening, and we should be really grateful that we have so many different organizations, like the Great Mural Project and the Silo Project, because the hallmark of a thriving city, in my opinion, is public art, and we certainly have talented artists, and I'm looking forward to supporting the Great Mural Project at their event. But I just want to make sure that we remain in gratitude, I think. I think that we have so many people, as evidenced by our public speakers here tonight, that care, like Councilwoman Garcia said, just like we do about making Saginaw better. And I just feel very grateful that we have so much wonderful things going on, and we have difficult decisions in front of us when it comes to ARPA dollars, because there are so many wonderful and worthy people to try and support. So just thank you all for everything. That's all I have.
Thank you. Last but not least, it's me. Last two weeks have been extremely busy. I won't even begin to tell all of the stuff that I did, but I do want you to know this, there are still some Canadians who are around, and they're still ramping and raving about the Memorial Cup. So if you think that Saginaw is not moving forward, it is. For all of my public speakers, I thank you so much. It's a lot of tough decisions got to be made within the next 90 days, and I really want my fellow council persons to let's, let's really be fair. Let's be fair across the board. One of the things that I've learned in the last couple of weeks is, is that we can do it. We can do it. We can do whatever we want to do in this city. There is stuff for us to do. There are places for us to go. As a matter of fact, we got a wave pool, and I don't know if we got workers over there or not, but I took about 19 kids this morning, and the bathrooms aren't open because they ain't got no staff. And it's hot outside. So there are jobs. Now, you coming out of high school, young people, you're not going to make $30, okay? I don't make $30, okay? So we need to encourage each other to do a little more. You know what? I'm putting a plea out to my senior citizens, those that can't, those that have nothing to do and want to help in the community, come on, work at the pool for us. Get in the sunshade and work so that the pool can be open. There are elderly people who want to get out of their homes, and we need to check on them, okay? It's 94 degrees outside, that's hot. That's hot. This is the season where people actually get caught up in their houses, and nobody pays attention. I got 40 senior citizens I check on on a daily basis. Why? They are my elders. Some of them don't even live in my neighborhood, but I call to make sure they up. You up out there, babe? I'm on my way. We got to start looking out for one another. I tell you one more time, what the world needs now is love, sweet love. We don't need no more bickering. We need no more bickering, guys. With that, I am done. Madam Clark.
Takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one presentation this evening, but I have a couple of updates, announcements for council. So the OMB Director, Yolanda Bland, and the Finance Director, Lori Brown, and I recently met with the Michigan Department of Treasury, and as background on that, I started meeting with them probably monthly years ago, because we were a financially distressed community, and we had, one of the indicators is if you have less than 3% of fund balance, then you are considered that. We had less than 1% at one point. So we met with them regularly, I did, and then Yolanda and Lori started meeting with them, and we've made a lot of changes, as you know, and so at one point, we started asked, "What are you going to do?", and then it moved into, "What did you do, and how did you do it, and can you share that with Treasury?" We still meet with them, it's not nearly as frequently, it's basically when, I think it pops up on the reminder, so we met with them June 6th to just review some of the things. We're always going to have this issue where we cannot increase our millage, our property tax, because of the tax cap. That's always going to be a drain on our bonding ability, our bond rating, that's the primary issue that bond rating agencies have with our financial rating, and then will currently have, and we're moving out of that and trying to make plans, but we do have issues with OPEB and pension liability. So during that meeting, we did see that Saginaw is on the preliminary list of qualified units to receive funding for approximately $12.7 million from the Michigan Local Retirement Grant Program, so that's another good program that we can be a part of. We received a pension grant last year for funding level. This one is based on a formula that includes communities with retirement costs exceeding 22% of total government fund revenues as of 6/5/24. So that award, if we do get that, that will reduce our payment for this year to 22%. So that will have a positive impact on this financial, our fiscal year. So we'll keep you updated on that, we'll go through the application process and move forward with that. The Hot Time Summer Youth Activities document is available on the city's website, we'll promote that the same as we did last year. We work on that project with the Saginaw County and the Saginaw School District through the City-County School Liaison Group. But I do want to thank Vicki Davis and Rachel Josaska and the manager's office, they did all the work to put that together, so thanks again to them, and please check it out and refer people to that. And finally, tomorrow at Bliss Park, June 18th, from And finally, tomorrow at Bliss Park, June 18th, from 12:00 to 2:00, there is a Community Resources Fair. The event is free and open to the public. It's hosted by the city's neighborhood and inspections Division, and will allow Saginaw residents to learn more about the invaluable services and programs available in the community. There are over 30 organizations that will be on hand to provide information, including housing assistance, mental health and counseling, information, technology support, transportation assistance, employment and job skill training, youth development, and community activities, resources for seniors, and more. And I want to thank Cassie Zimmerman and her staff for planning that and coordinating the event. We did issue a press release. You can see on that all of the organizations that are going to be there. If you want more information, you can contact the manager's office. And as I mentioned, we have a presentation about the services and some of the history for the Saginaw Public Libraries. And Diane Clock is here to provide that update. Diane?
Mayor Moore, members of council, Madam Clerk, and staff members. My name is Diane Clock, and I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Public Libraries of Saginaw. And I would like to show you how the Public Libraries of Saginaw has grown with the times. My story begins when Hoyt Library opened to the public in 1890. At that time, it was intended to be used for research. Books could not be checked out. The building retained its original form until 1920, when an addition was added to house the East Side Library. In the 1950s, another addition was added for an enlarged children's section. The Ruth Brady Wicks Library was dedicated in 1983. It continues a tradition of library services in South Side Saginaw, which began in 1911 with a small collection of books for children and adults in a classroom of the Washington School. Saginaw Township opened its first modern-day library facility in 1967, when the west end of the new township hall was designated as a branch of the Public Libraries of Saginaw. The township contracted with the Public Libraries of Saginaw to run the library, an agreement which still stands today. In 1975, plans were drawn up to begin construction of a separate facility, which opened to the public in 1976, and offered such services as storytimes, service to shut-ins, lunch programs, and reference service by telephone, which was a brand-new concept at that time. Located on the corner of Harrison and Hancock Streets, Butmann Fish Library served the public from 1916 to 1978. The present Butmann Fish Library opened in 1979 and serves as an active community library with an extensive program of children's services. Then, in 1945, fines were 10 cents per week. Now, there are no fines, but borrowers must return material before checking out new things. Now, with your library card, you can connect with educational resources for parents and students, or even learn new hobbies using the Michigan E-Library. You can stream movies, TV shows, download audiobooks, or eBooks using Libby, Hoopla, and Canopy. You can discover hundreds of Michigan's cultural destinations and natural attractions with your Michigan Library Card. You can check out free or discounted admission passes or other exclusive offers to hundreds of Michigan State Parks, campgrounds, museums, trails, arts and cultural destinations, and more. Then, in 1935, a library patron could check out records, including Mozart and Benny Goodman. Now, hundreds of CDs and DVDs are available for circulation. The new Library of Things offers board games, iPads, and Chromebooks for people to check out and use. Then, you had to fill out a slip to find books. Later, the card catalog was used, but you needed to know the title or author to find the book. Now, you can search using your phone or a computer with a specific title, subject, or author. And now, using Talpa Search, you can use AI to enter a topic to search for books. For example, find books with an astronaut stranded on Mars, or a book where they go on a mountain and get rid of something, or a time travel romance with a blue cover. Children's programs were added later. The photo on the left is from a 1935 story hour. Not much has changed, except the locations. Now, you can find children's programs in places like Saginaw Township Spray Pool, Ringwood Forest Park near St. Charles, and the Castle Museum. Now, the libraries also host programs for adults. In the photo on the left, the participants learned the art of head wrapping, and on the right, patrons learned how to make egg rolls from the magnificent Ming. Now, there are book clubs for adults who want to share their love of reading with others, or find different genres to explore. Here's a photo from a 1923 reference room. Then, it was just chairs and tables. Now, we've added more comfortable seating in places. The children's area was redesigned to be more attractive and welcoming for the children. In addition to the programs that I've already covered, the Hoyt Library houses the local history and genealogy section with an extensive collection of materials and resources. It is also a government document depository and has legal help, self-help resources for people to use. Then, a bookmobile from the 1960s. And the bookmobile now. It's still serving the citizens of Saginaw County. The summer reading program has started and is now for all ages. I encourage you and your children, or your grandchildren, or all those little kids you took, Mayor Moore, to go to the nearest branch and register for the reading program. Return your reading log by August 3, and you'll receive a prize. Saginaw made its impact first as a lumber town, and later for making automotive parts. Now, Saginaw is known for healthcare, hockey, and murals. The Public Libraries of Saginaw have also adapted to the changing needs of the citizens of Saginaw. They are not your grandmother's libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? I have one.
Yes.
I didn't get any t-shirts. What's the price this year? T-shirts? Because the kids love the t-shirts.
You just fill out that registration form, do your 20 hours, and find out.
I'm gonna give you my 20 hours. I like the little t-shirt.
Mayor Moore, I believe for the younger children, when they get their library, you know, when they register, they get a book, just for registering. And then, then I don't know what the prizes are for when they, when they finish. But, but we like to make sure they are encouraged to start reading.
Anybody have any questions?
I just got a comment.
Yes.
I live by the Butmann Fish Library, and I utilize it a lot in college, and taking my daughter to the different programs, and then like Hoyt Library used to do like the kids bingo taker. So it was just a great thing to get her out, and the reptiles and that at Hoyt that they would have. And my daughter just came last week to pick up my grandson, he spent the night, and she goes, "Yeah, Mom, I'm gonna go to the Hoyt Library." And I'm thinking, like, what is she gonna do there? She's not in school. She goes, "Well, I'm gonna take Emiliano down there to go look at the creatures and that." And I was like, she remembered what I did with her, and now she's doing it with my grandson. So I think it's just awesome that the libraries, you know, are doing so many different changes and keeping up with technology. And I agree, I love the t-shirts, too, because we used to do the reading program, the water bottle, and then that, and then the little Pizza Hut coupon. So hopefully, they bring it back, or can get some funding for the shirts, because they were, I had every design every year, and I looked forward to that, so.
So she said, so she said, "Read your 20 hours."
It was a surprise, right?
Figure out what the prize is.
Well, we'll see who gets done reading first, and then I'll let you know. Thank you. Have a great presentation.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. And I do want to add something that I did forget. I wanted to also recognize Calvin Murphy, who's in our tech services. He did a lot of work on Hot Times, very talented at tech design and with the webpage, so wanted to mention him as well. And that concludes the management update.
Any questions for the city manager?
Just got a comment.
Yes.
Yeah. Tim, you mentioned a couple of times the Hot Times, and we put that together, too. So if anybody's not familiar with it, this is just a lot of stuff for kids to do in the summer, because you mentioned it was a conjunction with the school system, so. So thanks for bringing that up.
Let me acknowledge, we have some ex-officials here. We have, we have a current official here, and I'd just like to welcome you to our meeting. I'm not coming to Lansing to sit through your session, but I'm joking, I will, I will. But welcome tonight. You know, you're always welcome back home. Welcome home. Madam Clerk.
Are there any further questions for the manager?
I didn't hear no questions.
It takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available in City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved. Second?
Do we have any exceptions?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay, one at a time, please.
31.
Councilmember Ball. 31? I need any others? You and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number 31 is to approve the proposal with Spicer Group for $1,372,000 for the design of the infrastructure improvements related to the medical diamond development for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Thank you. Actually, I had a few questions in regards to that, and I talked to the city manager and also Phil Carwatt in regards to that. So some of my questions are really for explanation, so the other, the citizens will know what I know. And maybe even for Mr. Carwatt to expound some on some of the information. And one thing I wanted to know, and I have gotten an answer to, and I'd like to maybe, if you can elaborate a little bit more on, is where these dollars are coming from, because I do understand they're not coming from the city of Saginaw. So if you can expound a little bit on where those dollars are coming from.
So first, the, there's two sources of revenue for this. And so the first one is an appropriation that Congressman Kilde helped us get. That was for $3 million. That's related to utility line burial at this site. That's not part of this project, though. The other remaining funds that are allocated are $30.3 million, which is a federal appropriation that is specifically noted for infrastructure related to medical, education, and private development. I think that's the language, something similar to that. And it's also noted that it must be spent between Washington and the riverfront, and I believe it's, Phil, what street?
Meredith to the south and up to the AT&amp;T Building, that.
From Meredith, okay.
North of Hoyt.
So that's the source of this, the funding for this project.
And also, I understand, and people don't understand, it's for the medical diamond. But the work that is getting ready to be done, and I think Mr. Carwatt can speak to this, exactly, kind of in a nutshell, because it's kind of literally, what exactly is getting ready to be done? And when that is done, because everything is not set in stone in regards to the medical diamond, so I'd like to know, when the work is done, will it be available for whomever to be able to utilize that if the medical diamond just happened, not to come to fruition?
Yeah, so what this is, and you guys are aware of it, we've been talking about the medical diamond now for quite some time, and there have been studies going on. So obviously, the city has a lot of aged infrastructure, and that portion of Water Street from Meredith North has some extremely aged infrastructure, both water and sewer. So in order to support any of the development that's going to come, this agreement here is to do the engineering. We've already done preliminary studies, preliminary engineering. We know the condition of the sewer, the condition of the water main. So this is to now get the permits for us to basically replace all of the water, the water mains from, on Water Street from Meredith North, and then all of the side streets, the blocks that run between Washington and water, to accommodate the development. And then, fortunately, the sewer system, from our video, our cleaning and televising, is not in too bad a condition. There are some areas where we're going to have to replace it and line it and do some manhole adjustments. So the big portion of this is to do all of that work and get some bidding docs ready for bid. Our plan is to have some bidding docs ready for bid by, by the time you get all the permits in that March, April of next year, so we can get it out to bid and start construction sometime summer of next year, to get all that infrastructure in place for the proposed development that will be forthcoming.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I have similar questions, but my question is, when these guys come in and do this work, we can't ask them to hire people in the city of Saginaw? I mean, that, this is government money that we use and it come from the federal government. I'm sure the federal government has some guidelines on hiring with federal money for projects.
Sure do.
So what I'm asking is, I'm asking the city manager, Carwatt, whoever in charge of that, to see that we can get some people hired in the city of Saginaw. I'm tired, sick and tired of seeing people coming to our city, working, and we don't see people that look like the city that works. What I mean is, we got 50% of minorities working in the city. I don't see no people that look like they live in the city, working on these projects. And I know, because I see when they drive out of town. I'm in the area. And I'm sick and tired of it, Phil. I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump on you, or the city manager, or the city, but I'm sick and tired of it. We need to hire our children if we're going to give them some hope. If we don't give them no hope, they're going to continue to do dope. It's just that plain and simple. And we have opportunity with federal dollars that our taxpayers pay for, that come out my pocket and everybody else that's been working, to hire people to live in the city. Why can't we do this? I don't understand it. Don't nobody come and say they even tried? But I'm crying out, I'm asking the city to find out who we can get, how we can get people in the city hired. If not, I'm going to send a letter to the contractors, myself, and ask them why they can't do that. Because it's sick and tired to me, you know?
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is, is that I don't, I'm not responsible for who the contractors hire individually. I mean, they have, however, they're hiring qualified or non-qualified and training. I can't get involved into it. That'd be a conflict of interest for me. So I can't get involved in who the contractors hire. And all I know is, we follow all of the city, the state, and the federal requirements when we put bids out for procurement. And whether it's minority-owned, or, but I mean, I can't specifically tell them who, whether or not there's some programs that can be created somehow that get these individuals into some of these contractors. I think that's a great idea, but I don't know. I wouldn't be the person to know about.
Well, I would hope that the city would even ask for some sometime, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we passing these dollars out, giving it to people. It seems like it's just, hey, can you hire some people living in the city of Saginaw? I mean, it just only makes sense to me.
I think we can ask, because, I mean, they're all looking for employees. So if they're looking for employees, we need to...
I haven't seen any sites where Rhodey Brothers or anybody else that do any construction is looking for anybody. I haven't seen.
Right now, there's no construction there being done, so we don't know what companies are going to do it, right? So right now, it's Spicer Engineering, so they're all engineers like Phil Carwatt working on it. But, you know, we'll have, we talked about some opportunities that are coming up, so let's get the youth in here to apply for those jobs, too, you know, like we talked about.
Appreciate that. Can you guys give us a report on that, seeing if we getting any leeway with this? I really appreciate that.
Yep.
Citizens want to know, too.
We can encourage, you know, we can't, we can't require...
We can't force them to what? On federal contracts, from federal money, there is a minority content in there.
And there's Davis Bacon, too, and they follow that.
And we bid and include it, and then they meet it, but it don't mean I can't, it doesn't, I don't know who, whether it's female-owned, or, you know, I mean, but it doesn't necessarily classify what type of employees they have working for. Ownership of the business.
I'm just, I'm crying out to people that I think can get this done. And I hope that maybe you guys can report something later to say that they're interested in hiring some people, and maybe we can find somebody to do those jobs. We can't, we got people that's coming out of prison with lots of jobs, we got people coming out of high school, they leaving here. My grandson left here to be a firefighter. He went to Eckhart, Indiana. Now, he's in Fisher, he's making $80,000 to $100,000 a year as a firefighter in Fisher's, Indiana. And we need to keep those type of jobs here. I would like to see him stay here and work, you know what I'm saying? But he don't have any hope here because he's scared, being a young man, living in the city of Saginaw, that his chances of going back and forth to work with the other people that's not going to work is going to do something to him. So if we put the other people... So if we put the other people to work, then maybe they won't feel like doing things like this. We got to find some kind of way of doing this, man. I appreciate the report. If you guys can ask them, or whatever, or find out, give us a report on what the federal government says, the content of minority hiring for people when we given our contracts. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. In regards to, you kind of touched on it, Councilman Balls, you, you all are familiar with the business development program from federal, by using federal dollars, right?
I, I don't know.
Where you have to use minority businesses when you use federal dollars?
I know when we bid jobs, that certain, as we go through the state process, because any federal state dollars, and the state dictates in its contracts that we bring for you for approval, like we have one in a resolution today, but that, what the minimum, whether it's 5% minority, 8%, and when we go through the process, they have to prove to us that, how are they meeting that, whether it's the prime contractor or the subcontractor? I'm familiar with that, yes.
Okay, all right.
And the majority of this funding is state funding.
Oh, beg your pardon?
The majority of the funding for this work is, is state funding.
So to go through those things, there will be a minority requirement on this, on, when we go to bid, the contracts.
All right.
Anybody?
Thank you very much.
Yes, my, yes, Councilman Flores, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I believe we have to have a motion for anyone else to have discussion added at this point.
Correct.
We have to have what?
A motion.
For what?
To accept. The, uh, agenda item thirty-one.
I'll second that.
But I thought he was asking a question.
Yeah, but after discussion, because they.
Because they made the exception.
Fine, I support.
They made the exception for number thirty-one. That was the only one that we had, right? Or did you have another, Councilman Balls? Okay. Moving on, is there any more questions? That's what I thought.
Yes.
We have a question over here for thirty-one, right, Councilman Flores?
Yep, just one.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. At the end of the council communication, when it says there's 7,500 work hours of various types of services factored into the proposal?
Yep.
Is that hours of work that have already gone into the proposal?
That's going to, that's what, that's what makes up the cost of the proposal. So when I, when I get proposals, I ask for an effort matrix.
Mm-hmm.
So that I know the various positions and how much work hours they estimate are going to go into that project plan. So as they do monthly billings, I can check that against the amount that they're billing, so that I know that that work's being completed. So you could have everything from a project engineer, project manager, on down to an office staff, so when they submit monthly billing. So that's an effort, effort matrix that makes up the 1.372 million in the, in the proposal.
The reporting process.
So it's over 7,500 hours of work that make up the 1.372 million dollars.
All right, thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, that's all I had.
I got a question on that, too. Out of those hours, that mean that we paying them at least almost $183 an hour? So I'm trying to figure out, who are these guys getting paid? You got some people getting paid $30 an hour, maybe some other guys, what, $400, $500 an hour?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's what you pay in these engineering firms, for project managers and project engineer fours and threes.
So they get $400, $500, $300 an hour?
Yeah, but they got very limited hours. I mean, but, you know, right, just sort of like right now, just to kind of show you comparison and costs. And that's why we brought a couple of our retired city inspectors back, because to hire an inspector through a contractor costs you anywhere from $130 to $220 an hour, and we can pay them, you know, contractually, but we, we're just, we don't have the staff to oversee all the projects we have, so we do have to outsource some services. Same thing with this, we don't have in-house staff that can provide this amount of work with everything else we're working on. So we have to contract it all. And that's standard throughout the, the state and the country.
So we, we normally contract people who, who have already worked for the city and already getting retirement, then they come back and get some money, and the other people looking for.
It's not normal, but right now, because of the, the hiring conditions, we can't, there's no engineers, there's no, you can't find them out there. So that's what we have to do, to have, to have people that are qualified enough to, because when you have state and federal dollars, you have to have daily inspection on all these projects, and you have to meet minimum certifications and qualifications to be able to do that, and you just, a lot of people aren't out there that do that anymore, so.
And even more so, you know, we've seen all of the dollars that have been put out, Infrastructure Act, the ARPA, that's put out, super high demand on the engineering firm, so they, their prices go up, construction prices have gone up.
Everything is. Okay.
Okay, so now we call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Can we say nay? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Astash?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have seven yes, six yes, and one no that motion carries. Takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any committee reports? Okay.
On to appointment of board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve items one through four, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have any exceptions? You and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to resolutions. Our first one is recognizing the Tri-County Community Adjudication Program as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is objecting to the transfer of tax-reverted properties from Saginaw County.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I need a motion to adopt. It's been moved, do I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to know what, what's going on with this? I mean, they, they trying to give us properties back? We sent it to them, they trying to give them back, or what?
Hello, councilmembers. So every year, any properties that go into foreclosure come back to the county land bank, but first, they're able to go back to any municipality that they're located in. At this point, when they go back to the land bank, folks in these properties actually still have time to catch up on their taxes before they go for auction later this year, around Thanksgiving time. So we'll have another one come back with whatever either folks didn't, they either didn't pay their taxes up, or the property wasn't sold at the auction. And then we would have another opportunity to either transfer those back to the land bank or keep them.
Okay, so, so what we really doing, we giving people a time to catch up, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and to buy?
Yep. So there are a number of properties in this that, that look like somebody probably was just behind on their taxes. There's probably about half of these in the 160 or so that, it's kind of shocking that they're on this list. There's another, maybe five or six that are vacant, side lots, or not, sorry, not vacant, but side lots on the side of somebody's property. A lot of them are fenced in or have some kind of play equipment or things, so I'm assuming those are also properties that somebody may want to still save. And then there's probably about half of them that are vacant lots.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution is approving the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the preventative maintenance on the Center Street Bridge.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes you to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions? Yes. Mayor Protem.
Um, I would motion that all future ARPA allocations be for capital expenses only, not programming.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Rediscussion?
Discussion.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, we, people are, you, uh, everybody here's bucket has been, has spent it so far, and now when we get down to Mr. Flores' bucket and myself's bucket, now you're going to say that we only do it for capital improvement, and there's still programming that we would like to see happen in the city with individuals that's, that need, that need help in the city of Saginaw. So I don't think it's fair for us to, uh, call out something like that when there's other organizations that need more work to be done. I don't agree with that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. My, uh, first of all, I'd like to maybe ask legal advice in regards to that, because I think we could be in a whole lot of trouble with that, because when these entities, when these people ask for ARPA dollars, and we, the city of Saginaw was over ARPA dollars, we never said, all you can get is capital, and to change in the middle of the road, we need to be very careful, in my opinion. I get, I will take some legal advice, but I wouldn't dare touch that. I wouldn't dare touch that, because we, we promised them, we never told people you could not have program dollars. A lot, a lot of these proposals include program dollars, and I think we as a council would be remit, we would be, I can't even think of the word, I'm so appalled, to even suggest that we want to snatch back. We might as well snatch back proposals and say, your proposal is kicked out because you didn't act.
Whoa, 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 stop.
Excuse me. I'm saying.
Quick clarification, quick order.
To say that you could not have program dollars. Some entities cannot use anything but program dollars. They don't even have an edifice, a lot of, for capital dollars. That's just my opinion, and I'd like maybe also some legal advice in regards to that.
But since we talk about opinions, let me state this, for the record. We've got people who had their names in the portal, and now we're going outside, taking in certain people, bringing them into the fold. We can't do that. I thought we said we weren't opening up the portal again.
Yes.
It hasn't happened, and I'm just saying, things have been coming to us, and these people put in for one thing. So it's like, if you didn't do it in the beginning, and once you came in, you had an opportunity to talk, but I thought we all agreed, once the portal closed, we weren't accepting any more applications because we have leftover money. We weren't, but that's just my opinion. You know, it's like they say, everybody got money. So, you know, I, I understand what everybody is saying. Yes, yes, Mayor Protem.
Just want to clarify that every one of us up here have been assigned to our buckets and the dollar amounts assigned to those buckets for the same amount of time, the same duration of time. So the notion that somebody has money left, we are nearing the end of the deadline here, and we owe Guide House more money after August, if we wish to have anyone, regardless of whom it is. But anyone who is going to oversee the remaining programming dollars, the existing programming dollars, is going to want to be paid for the work that they have to perform. And for us to continue to give out programming dollars when we have to have all of this allocated, and we have to pay Guide House more, and we don't know how much more we have to pay Guide House, to me, at some point, becoming fiscally responsible, and being fiscally responsible with this, and having a draw, line drawn, I would also clarify that no one who has received programming dollars thus far would be having their money snatched back. This would be simply, going forward, any new allocations that we would be looking at would be purchases, improvements, and capital expenditures. I don't know how much more money in programming we can continue to give out without hitting that cap. There's got to be a balance there, where we, we draw a line and we stop allocating programming money, and we focus on capital projects, so we don't end up having to come out of the general fund or anywhere else. We already have $412,000 that's unaccounted for with one of these agencies that is likely going to have to be paid back to the federal government. This is about fiscal responsibility. This isn't my money, because it's, it's everyone's money, and that's why, you know, I think that at some point, we have to start calling a close to this.
Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. So, speaking from a member that's been on the Workforce Committee, I do want to give the council a bit of history, just because not everyone was there during those meetings that myself and Councilman Balls have been to. There were recommendations originally from Guide House that were given, right? These are a number of folks that we have vetted from the portal, the 403 applicants that we have, this is what we should go with. We did that, right? That money got taken back, even after Guide House's recommendations. Partner Swift, Shift, had applied. There were a number of concerns, so we just decided to continue to move on, right? So now, we have gone through the applicants that had gone through the portal, and there weren't viable candidates. We're moving forward with people that are stepping up. It's a tough position to be, you can have a bad choice that had gone into the portal and applied, or, you know, not the best choice and with concerns, I don't want to say bad. Or something new has transpired within the next, last year or two, which is a better option, and you go with that. If it's within the guidelines of the treasury, if it's something that's helping our city and our community, us on that committee are going to look for that opportunity. I will say to the public, it's incredibly hard to be on the Workforce Committee in the city of Saginaw. If we only had the perfect idea of how to, how to create jobs here in the city of Saginaw, we would be sitting in a golden building. But that is not the situation. We have to go with what we have. We have looked over all the information. This is where we're at. There is no treasury rule saying that we have to go by a self-imposed portal. And these are rules that we are imposing on ourselves, similar to the motion that the Mayor Protem had said. If we handcuff ourselves to these things at this point in time, we are not doing the business of the, the citizens. We are handicapping ourselves for future expenditures. Guide House had been told that it would be capital and programming. I know capital's easier. Women of colors is a shining example of that. This is the reality of the situation. So we do need to move forward with what we know. Again, for the folks that weren't on the workforce development, all applicants through the portal were vetted, recommended, money came back, and this is where we're at. That's all I have for now.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. In the guidelines, in the final rules, it gives us a date itself of December of this year. Why would we try to go and change that at this particular point? And again, I will say, and I believe I'm done, it is, would not be fair to the other people. There's still entities that are coming, because we do have monies left from our youth, and we do have money for workforce. We don't know what's getting ready to happen. We don't know, and I'm the last one that ever want to claw back dollars from any entity, but that may happen. And we're going to have to utilize those dollars. And when it come to Guide House, I think I expressed how I felt about them at our last meeting. They need a report card. They need a report card. And there's other place, I don't know how much more money, just like, uh, Mayor Protem said, I don't know how much money either, but I'm not willing to give them anything over what they already have received. Claw, I don't want to say that, but nah. Guide House, I think, has done us a disservice, uh, since, since, uh, they have supposedly been assigned to help the city of Saginaw. I'm not happy with their work, but that's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Balls.
Yeah, we, we, um, not only that, um, the funds that we have had have incurred a lot of interest, and I'm sure we're gonna have to pay a few things to that interest, and if we gotta pay Guide House a little more out of the interest, then so be it. But, uh, no one on this council interfered with anybody else's bucket, and I don't think it's fair that anybody on this council interfered with somebody else's bucket. I don't think that's fair at all. I think that's playing politics, and it's playing games that don't need to be played in the city of Saginaw, when we got people out here that's hurting, that need help, that need mental health, that need, we, we got, we got money, $5 million in the mental health bucket that we spent, and it's just sitting there so they can build a building, but yet, we don't want to give out money to help people when they come out and stay out, anything like that. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair for, for the council lady to come here and try to mess with somebody else's bucket.
Yes.
That $5 million that is sitting there right now to help seed money for that medical diamond is my bucket, and everybody, not everybody, almost everybody, has consistently made overtures towards messing with that bucket. It's not about messing with that bucket, it's not about messing with anybody's bucket. The council still retains authority over all of those dollars and where they get allocated. It doesn't mean that they don't go to youth, it doesn't mean that they don't go to workforce development. It simply means that anything we consider will be given out in programming dollars, because again, at this point, regardless of whether we do any more programming dollars, the 800 and some thousand dollars that we allocated to Guide House, they said at the last update, it goes through August of this year. And that means we have from the end of August through December of 2026, where we have programming dollars that are allotted, that have to be overseen and accounted for by someone, whether it's Guide House or someone else. It has to be overseen by someone. And if we already have to pay Guide House more to have them oversee what's already been done, we're going to have to continue to pay them even more than that, the more programming we do. So, it's not about messing with somebody's bucket, it's about fiscal responsibility. Again, we've all had these dollars for consideration, and could have been moving and meeting far often than people chose to. So, that's all I have to say.
Yes, Councilman.
So, thanks, Mayor. I'm a person that will sit and listen to both sides of the argument, and that's what I'm doing right now. And I'm trying to figure out where you all would land on a couple of different things. So, Mayor Protem is bringing up a very good example. If we continue to fund programming, we're gonna have to monitor it. Guide House has been here for two years, like the sheds, it's gonna expand. I'm seeing a head shake down there at the end of the table from Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, that if we were to allocate any more money, that, I'm seeing a head shake no. And then, I've got Councilman Balls saying that it'd be a good thing. So, I, I want to make sure that if this is what we're gonna do, that we're gonna fund it, and we're gonna move forward, so that we're not sitting here. I, I really can't see where we would get to this point, and I know your displeasure for Guide House that you've just spoken, but damn it, who are we gonna hire in the middle of the damn program? I, I mean this logically, it doesn't, that would not make sense. So, I would support it, and also too, I want to say, Councilwoman Flores, thank, because I know I sent you an email, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because we didn't know what was going on in the committees. And if you, both Councilman Balls and yourself had went through all of these proposals, and looked at them and said, "You know, something just can't qualify," then that kind of changes my mind from what I was thinking originally, and I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, because we've had a conversation, but that's kind of where I'm gonna sit with this right now. If, if we're gonna do something, I want to make sure that we can get to the end, because like the mayor said before, I don't want this money going back to the government. I'm already displeasured that we can't find $400,000 in receipts, and we are gonna have to be responsible for that, and that does not look good either. However, I do want to say that when the risk assessment was done, at that time, they scored very high. But, like anything else, um, things can change. So, I believe I am done, and one thing, I, I guess this is kind of something that we've been talking about for maybe the last couple of meetings, and we were trying to get some more information on the come-out-stay-out program. That, you went through there, and you can't find anything, so you have found somebody to step up that has one hell of a program in the city with a lot of support from the community, and even outside the state of Michigan, to, um, to collaborate with, if I can say, on the services and stuff that are being provided by that. So, I just want to make sure that I can make a valid decision in the end of this conversation.
I'd like to say this. Councilwoman Flores, you said you went through the portal. No disrespect, partner network came, they're an employment agency. If you went through the list, did they get overlooked? Okay, and so, I'm just saying, because I'm not for the debate with nobody tonight. What I'm saying is this, you couldn't have went through it, because I've been through the book. I know what's in the book. And so, I'm just saying, are we looking at agencies, are people just contacting us, and then the teams make a decision? It's just a question. I'm not saying that it's happening. Can you hold on a minute?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it's happening, but I'm saying, there are some agencies in there still that, that were in the portal from day one, who fits some criteria. Have you done your research? Yes.
So, months ago, when the Workforce Development Committee was not actively meeting, I asked for partnership to be vetted through Guide House. So, the reason why we know what concerns were expressed earlier on, and that it was a pilot program, is because I asked for that information, because I thought when they came, spoke in front of us, it seemed like a no-brainer that that committee would maybe meet and have a conversation, but you guys didn't. And the same reason I'm asking about Ms. Riley's proposal, she came to me and said, "You guys didn't, you didn't..." Yeah, she's new.
She ain't in the portal.
No, she is in the portal. She's absolutely in the portal.
She's under a different organization in the portal.
She's under her name, and she has the same organization. It is in there.
Different organization.
Okay, finish.
At any rate, that's a $60,000 capital improvement for workforce development and youth, and it was not, it was never, ever discussed, not on the youth bucket, not on the, on the workforce development bucket. I'm sorry if people are taking offense to this, but we've had two years to deliberate these things. We have had the opportunity to vet these things, go through them, and here we are, putting people who haven't gone through the port hole, portal up for consideration. We're being asked to break precedent, and yes, it is a precedent that we set for ourselves, but how unfair is that to everybody else who had to adhere to that precedent? So, I, I still stand by my motion. I think that the fiscally responsible thing to do would be to find good capital projects for us to move forward on, so we can be done and not have to worry about any further reporting or paying Guide House, who, you know, has been met with mixed reviews.
Yes, Councilwoman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, Ms. Watson had the SHE mentoring program, which was student wellness and enrichment. The amount was $750,000 in the portal. That was not recommended by Guide House. Also, there was an email today at 4:50. Did you get that email regarding, okay, so those...
See, these emails are coming to all of us. So, no, I didn't get that.
Okay, well, that was with Partner Shift about the concerns there. The way that Guide House had facilitated these meetings is they would look through the portal, we would look through the portal. We would recommend things, they would say yes or no. They would say, "These are your best options." We took their advice, again, some of those, remember the auto applicant, where that gentleman was trying to do the auto, um, training program? That got kicked back to us. So, again, I've looked through the portal extensively, just, I have. From, start from scratch, there's 42% of applicants. Existing programs, which includes the medical diamond, which is not existing, uh, is the other percentage of that. So, I've done my homework, probably more homework than I should. I'm speaking from a place of confidence, competence, and this is our best option moving forward.
And what is that? And what is that?
The proposal that we have for come-out-stay-out that we've been mulling over for the past two months.
That, that wasn't even a motion, that's why I'm asking. It was not brought up as a motion, it was a motion for the, we got two or three motions going on. Yes.
Okay, okay, um, sort of what, uh, Mayor, you just said, because the conversation has shifted. Everything is being talked about, because I kind of went, "Zoo, what are that, what are you all talking about?" We're not talking, I didn't think we were talking about, but the discussion started on someone that's in a portal, not in a portal. The question is, or was, uh, capital versus program. And it done went everywhere past that. Can we stay on topic and do what we gonna do?
Call for the vote.
Or either hold it over to another day?
Call for the vote.
Call for the question.
Is the vote, if there's a motion on the floor, can you give me that motion again?
The motion right now is to call the question. There's not a second yet, though.
Did I get a second for call for the vote?
Second.
It's been a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You don't want to move forward?
What?
Want to keep discussing it?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Roll call vote. Jesus, it is now. You said the minutes, roll call vote.
Please tell me what we discussing right now, man.
The vote is on the call the question for the motion.
Did you see?
Okay, okay.
So, to make it legal?
All right.
There was a no vote. I need a roll call.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
It's just a call the question, so to end discussion.
Okay, thank you, yes.
And Councilmember Flores? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion is ended, we have to take the vote.
Now, the motion, please.
The motion is for all future, our, future ARPA allocations be for capital expenses only and not programming.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All those? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pardon me?
I do have some discussion.
Did we call the question?
Call for the question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got confused, I got confused.
Once the question gets called, you cannot come back and ask questions.
Yep, that's right, sorry. My mistake.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Balls.
No.
Mayor Protem Bench.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
No.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
No.
And Mayor Moore.
No.
You have five no and two yes. That motion is denied.
Can I make a suggestion to the committees? Can, can we, I know we kept meeting in the same room, but if another, if another council member has a suggestion, are y'all willing to consider them?
What do you mean?
For any, for, like, just like if I say, here's a program that could, that possibly can do it, would you look at it?
I have.
I'm asking the question.
You ask a question from what committee?
For any committee, any committee, I'm saying.
No, we, we didn't come to y'all meetings and ask y'all guys questions. We didn't come and ask y'all questions. I mean, we, we trying to take care of some business here to help out the community.
Right.
Now, now you want to play games with our committee. We, we got time for that.
Okay, great.
We have a committee, and we trying to get this stuff taken care of.
Councilman Balls.
Don't interrupt me when I'm talking.
Point of order.
Point of order.
You interrupting me.
Point of order.
You interrupt me, Brenda.
Can't be an argument.
And what I'm saying is, we did not do that with other committees. Let us handle our business. We think we got a good program. We, we vetted this stuff and vetted this stuff. Then all of a sudden, we got a little money left, and everybody want to play games. I don't have time for that.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but people have asked, uh, the youth, uh, committee, but, uh, it was up to us, you know, from their suggestions.
Right.
You know, but we had already, uh, and that's when it was a committee of two, and that was, uh, Councilman Williams and myself. We had already went over what we wanted and definitely didn't want. It was some things we wouldn't even consider, but, um, council people have, uh, asked us certain things, you know, about certain programs, uh...
That's all I was saying. That's all I was saying. Any questions on this side? Where are we at?
Still under miscellaneous business, you do not...
Under miscellaneous business. Yes.
Point of inquiry. For the, um, tabling of the previous motion for the workforce development, for the come-out-stay-out workforce, have those all been actualized?
Councilwoman Flores, who you ask?
So, there's a motion that, until there's all information given, I'm not sure, I'm not, don't remember who did the motion. Has that all been satisfied?
I think that, um, I guess I'm supposed to answer that question. Um, I know that there is, uh, that we've been working with the foundation, and I guess last week, there was an addition of another, uh, person to this group, so, um, at this point, we're still vetting it. We want to make sure that everything is, um, where it should be, and then get back with you at the point.
So, that's a no?
I guess that is a no, yes.
All right, thank you. Because I'm, I'm...
I, I understand, I get it.
Restricted until that requirement's...
We're, we're working through this process. There's more than just myself, it's Guide House, it's Ms. Brown. We're working through this process.
And then, Mayor, just... Thank you. I do agree that we are on a timeline, and I understand that you are all working hard. I'm hoping that this can all be, uh, approved or cleared by, at minimum, the next few meetings or the next meeting.
And like I said, we get information late last week, or else we would have brought that, brought it before you.
Understood.
So, we are hoping that we'll have everything tied up.
All right, thank you.
Any other motion? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, do I, I gotta move and support, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Have a good evening.